Okay, call this meeting in order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invitation to follow.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials, grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen?
Here.
Green?
Here.
Lafore?
Here.
Ms. Stravich?
Here.
Reindell?
Here.
Ricks?
Here.
Warren?
Here.
Let's see, everybody here tonight, approval of minutes for the city council meeting on February 5th, the motion would be in order.
Make a motion.
Support.
Motion's been made and supporting discussion on the minutes or the motion. If you're not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items, if anybody'd like to address the city council. Come on up, state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Jeff Yarck, state representative and former council member. I guess that makes me alumni.
Yeah, maybe. Do you have seventeen years or more in?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay. As I said, thank you, I had my in-district listening time in the community center, in the commuter room, I appreciate that. A few residents come in and talk about issues, making my lap around the various local governments, make sure I stay in touch. As one of my campaign promises was definitely taking local government to Lansing and working on a better relationship. This is also my report back to all of you and telling you what's going on, and a few things. I think probably most concerning was the M-19 resurfacing, the micro-surfacing that happened last summer. You know, we put a thing out in The Voice, an editorial for me, to remind people that this was not a city project, that this was the state. I will say publicly to all the residents of Richmond, I'm sorry. I don't get to control MDOT personally, but I did have a meeting with them to share the displeasure that Richmond had with them. Because this contractor extended it over two years, fundamentally, he's gonna be, he's gonna have a performance improvement plan review, so he is on the radar, they are on the radar for next year, and that MDOT is aware that, my great concern, that this gets done properly next year. And then, I think there's some discussion of doing some night work as opposed to day to try to do a little better relationship. I've met with MDOT, one thing I made it clear is that I think that we have a very poor relationship between MDOT and local government, and that my goal is to push for better working relationships and good, better communication. Some people have brought up the need for left turn signals in lanes. My understanding that 2020, there'll be a modernization process, and they are aware that, as I spoke to the city manager, that MDOT is gonna have to start those conversations now regarding the need for those items, and I've heard from people on that. So I wanted to kind of share with you that. I also want to congratulate the city, a few weeks ago, there was a Career Tech Education Award Ceremony that the city of Richmond received a tribute, you know, actually from my office, and I think regarding our cable program and work together with the local school district, so I want to say thank you on that. Just a few other little tidbits. The, and by the way, I always appreciate the opening the council meeting with a prayer. I actually opened up a few months ago our house session with that prayer, a little something from Richmond brought to our state house. And revenue sharing, that's a big priority of mine to make sure that that stays funded. Road funding, there's an additional $175 million that I'm working, I'm starting to support the efforts there to get that money out to communities. Richmond's done, always done a great job on its roads and budgeting, but again, trying to bring more of that out there. The veterans' property tax exemption, I have a bill to try to reimburse local government for that. There's no way this would affect veterans, their exemption, but I just had a hearing last week to remind the state that whenever we put a mandate on local government, we are supposed to pay for it. And I've sat at this table complaining about it before, and you're hearing about it again, but my bill did get a hearing, and I think there's support for the idea that when the state mandates local government to do something underheadly, we are supposed to reimburse local government, so that's about nineteen thousand for the city of Richmond. So that's what I have, thank you for letting me come before you, and I appreciate seeing everyone again.
Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else like to address council? We'll move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, change?
I would just request that council consider switching items number two and item, with item number eleven. We do have audience here for item number eleven, which is the microbrewery license, and I don't believe we have people here for item number two, which is the introduction, first reading of the golf cart ordinance.
So you're not gonna make them sit through a grueling?
Well, you know, we normally have pretty quick agendas, but the clerk did remind me today that they, we may want to switch those two.
Anything else, Jeff?
Uh, no.
Okay. City council, any changes? A motion to amend would be in order.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Motion's been made in support, change number eleven to two and two to eleven. Any discussion? If you're not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made in support, there's no discussion on the motion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration, which we have thirteen this evening. First one being consideration of the second reading and adoption of ordinance number 156-22, tobacconist or cigar/cigarette shop uses in B2 district. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give second reading and adopt ordinance 156-22, which will amend the land use table of the zoning ordinance to allow tobacconists and cigar/cigarette shops within the B2, which is our downtown zoning district. February 5th, the council gave introduction, first reading to this ordinance, and prior to that, the planning commission in January also approved this.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to give second reading, adopt ordinance 156-22, which will amend the land use table of the zoning ordinance to allow tobacconists or cigar/cigarette shops within the downtown B2 zoning, subject to a special condition use approval. Support.
Motion's been made in support, is there any discussion? Was there any public comments since the last, since first reading?
We did not receive any.
And to refresh everybody's memory, this was something, it was an oversight on our part on the planning commission, and it's just, one of the things came up, and we had somebody that thought it was legal to go there, they went there, we told them, "I'm sorry, it's illegal," they pulled out of there, now it's legal again. Things like that sometimes pop up, and there's, if you've ever looked at our ordinance book, you'll know why, it's that thick. You know, it's just hard to cover everything. So anyhow, this is gonna allow that to happen there, so. Any comments? Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Move on to item number two on the amended agenda is consideration of approving resolution number 2018-2, microbrewer license request for Starcraft Brewery LLC, 69209 Forest. Mr. City Manager?
Council is being requested to consider approving resolution 2018-2. This resolution will approve the request we received from Starcraft Brewery for the, for the microbrewery license at that address on Forest Street. Previous to this, the Stars did go in front of the planning commission and get a special condition use permit approved at the planning commission in June of 2017. They also then went before the Economic Development Corporation for a downtown revitalization project, which was approved in July of 2017, and then as part of their process to get their microbrewery registered with the state, the local unit of government does need to approve this resolution that's attached, which we received from the Liquor Control Commission at the state. And then, the owners are here, along with a representative from McComb County Planning.
Very good. Would anybody like to make a comment to the city council at all? If not, we'll pull ahead. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2018-2, which will approve the request for a microbrewer license from Starcraft Brewery LLC at 69209 Forest. Support.
Motion's been made in support, is there any discussion? We're looking forward to the business anytime soon. A lot of people talking about it, waiting on it. Should be, should be quite a success. Any other comments? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Good luck. Uh, let's see, we move on to item number three, consideration of bid award, 2017 CDBG ADA ramp upgrades. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2017 CDBG ADA ramp upgrades project for the construction to begin the spring of 2018. Again, this year, we're doing another quadrant of the corner of Oak and Byer Streets, it would be the southwest quadrant. Administration's recommendation is to go with the low bidder, which is Fiori Enterprises, in the amount of $14,732.50. They have done other work, that is prevailing wage work similar to CDBG, Jim has checked their references. One thing on your table tonight, there is amended motion for item number three, the ADA ramps, there was omission of the contractor's name in the original motion in your packet.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the 2017 CDBG upgrade project to Fiori Enterprises in the amount of $14,732.50, with expenses charged to appropriate line items within the HUD fund and the Major Street Fund. Support.
Motion's been made in support, any discussion on this item? We discussed this at our CDBG hearing, ongoing project. Any audience comments on this item? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four is consideration of bid award, 2018 water and sewer materials. Mr. City Manager?
The city purchases water and sewer system materials as needed for system maintenance and repairs. A small inventory is kept on hand for emergencies, and the inventory is replaced as items are used. Taking some input from the council last year, we did kind of work on the bid awards process, so there will be just one motion tonight for the low bidder, which is Michigan Pipe and Valve.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the 2018 water and sewer system materials contract to Michigan Pipe and Valve at the unit prices submitted for the time period March 1st, 2018 to February 28, 2019, with the expenses charged to the appropriate line item in the water and sanitary sewer funds.
Support.
Motion's been made in support, is there any discussion on this item? Have we dealt with them before?
Not recently, I mean, they are a supplier that companies, contractors around here use, we haven't personally, but I did call them and ask them some questions as far as delivery concerns that I had and whatnot, and they seemed to respond appropriately.
Quite a difference between who we've had for a number of years, vice versa.
Well, as, in my opinion, I did review them, and they're consistent. The contractor isn't as local as the other typically, like HD Supply, which is now Corin Maine, or Etna Supply, they're more local, they tend to get these projects, but.
Good, good. Any other comments? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number five is consideration of bid award for the 2018, 2020 generator maintenance. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2018 to 2020 generator maintenance contract. The project was advertised and mitten, and the advertisements were also placed in The Voice. The city received five bids, and the low bidder is the contractor that had it previously.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to award the 2018 to 2020 generator maintenance contract, 2018 Gen 1 to ACDC Electrical, with the expenses charged to the appropriate line items, including general fund, fire fund, sanitary sewer fund, and water fund, in the fiscal years 1718, 1819, 1920, 21, budgets with the estimated amount of $15,450.
Support.
Motion's been made in supported. Any discussion?
I believe this is a contract that we used last year, right?
Correct, yes. Again, quite a difference between the other four bidders.
A lot.
Huge difference.
I mean, they, they actually held the two previous contracts, which is the last six years, so they're certainly comfortable with their prices and.
What do they actually do, Jim? Do they, is this once a year, or?
Uh, two times a year, in the spring and in the fall, they have maintenance checks, the different items that you'd cover in each time of year.
Yeah.
And they're on call if there's emergency repairs.
Yeah.
Jim, can you explain, previously, we did not have our portable generators as part of this?
We did add to this contract that in the first year, so every three years, that the portable generators would, would be included in the, in the inspection, just to ensure that they are functioning when we need them to, and we don't run those, they don't run automatically like our permit generators, every week they're running, so they get a little more use. The temporary ones, though they don't get the use, they certainly should be inspected to make sure they work when we need them to.
Yeah.
It's a good idea.
Yep. Just when we're gonna run electric out to.
Didn't want to have a repeat of. I told you, get that in the contract.
Well, very good. Any other comments on this? Any audience participation on this item?
I have just one question, did they do a low bank test on me?
In the, yep, in the fall, every year.
All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have the consideration of bid award for the 2018 aggregate materials and supply. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2018 aggregate material contract. The project was again advertised and mitten, and also placed in The Voice, where we received six bids, and the low bid is the TR Piperzak.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the 2018 aggregate supply contract to TR Piperzak at the unit prices of $14.34 per ton for 23A limestone, and $6.44 per ton for MDOT Class 3 sand. Support.
Motion's been made in support, is there any discussion on this item? Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. Again, low bidder, local. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven, consideration of bid award for the 2018 grounds maintenance. You're getting a lot of mileage out of us tonight.
I'll tell you the last one for Jim tonight.
Hopefully you're not back for a while.
Council.
City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider awarding the 2018 grounds maintenance contract. The project again was bid in both mitten and The Voice, we received seven bids, and we are recommending that we award the contract to the low bidder, Tommy's Lawn Service. Tommy's had both the summer and winter maintenance contracts this year, and we were very satisfied with their work on both.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to award the 2018 grounds maintenance contract, 2018 GM 1 to Tommy's Lawn Service, with the expenses charged to the appropriate line items of the general fund, Major Street Fund, local street fund, TIFA fund, sanitary sewer fund, and water fund, in the fiscal year 1718 and the fiscal year 1819, budgets with an estimated amount of $12,624.
Support.
Motion's been made in support, is there any discussion on this? I think you're right, it looked like you did a nice job on the lawn, and I heard you did a nice job on the snow too.
We got a lot of good compliments from the police, and I know they're here 24/7, and so we're often, they're the first to let us know if they didn't do a good job, and they did.
Yeah, great.
Great price.
Any audience participation on this one? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number eight is consideration of Little Library. Mr. City Manager?
City council is scheduled to consider approving the placement of a Little Library at the Trailhead Park through the efforts of Eagle Scout Henry Altermat. Henry is a senior at Armada High School and the grandson of our library board member, Mary Lou Berg. He approached the library director about completing an Eagle Scout project for, for the library, and they discussed this idea, and the library and recreation director spoke on the item and felt it'd be a good addition to one of the city parks. The library board gave their approval on December 11th, and the rec. board gave their approval at the January 9th meeting. The location that the, all three had come up with is the Trailhead Park. It's used by both visitors to the community, but also by community members that walk on the trail. It's, the rec. director goes there to update the information kiosks that the city has, and the, it's on the way from, to work for the library director, and so they felt they could kind of keep an eye on it. We also felt that, I hate to say it, but it's probably less prone to vandalism there than like at BB Park, where we have more youths hanging out, generally speaking, so they kind of thought that would also be helpful.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the placement of a Little Library at the Trailhead Park through the efforts of Eagle Scout Henry Altermat.
Support.
Motion's been made in support, discussion?
I'll just say that both the Eagle Scout and our library director here tonight, if you have any questions.
I do. Henry, would you step up, please? Number one, we appreciate you doing this in Richmond. I have one question. In our background brief, it says that construction of the library and a licensing fee of the library with a fee of $40 per structure, who's getting the fee?
Uh, it goes to the Little Free Library, because whoever first came up with the Little Free Library idea had licensed it.
Oh.
The whole reason they licensed it was so that when you registered, you had to put it on the website, so it went on the global map. So if you go to Little Free Library's website, it does show.
Okay.
All throughout the country where these maps are.
So for the $40, you also do get placed on the, on their website, so people can find these little libraries throughout.
Is that a one-time fee?
Yes.
Okay, one-time fee. And who's gonna be responsible for that?
Uh, the fee, me.
You.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions of Henry?
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you.
Not a, I don't have a question of Henry, just in general, are we going to, it talks about recirculating books and putting them, you know, kind of a share-type program, we can allow magazines and all sorts?
I think that would be up to the library director and the rec. director. I think it's not intended necessarily for magazines. I believe Henry will originally stock it, but then will use like the donations to the library to kind of keep it going. Also, it is kind of a, you know, you take one, you leave one, you know, type system. So if you go to take a book, you often generally replace it with a book you had at your home, and so I think it's more for books versus magazines.
And then also, you brought the point about recirculating it with some of the donations that come into the library, and I know we always have a annual book sale and that sort of stuff, so maybe we can.
Absolutely.
Support that.
Yep, yep. I think that's the intent.
Great.
John, would there be any reason that the city would not pay that $40, since it will be part of our library? Fine, either way. Okay. I'm gonna make an amendment motion, to the main motion, that the city of Richmond pays the $40 fee for the structure. It's gonna, basically is an extension of our own library.
Great idea.
Yeah, support.
Take whatever money you're making and make us a really nice little library, hopefully. Okay, any other comments?
Um, Mr. Mayor, I would just like to share that I love this idea. I've seen these in other communities, cities, townships. I think having it at the Trailhead is the perfect place to have it. It's going to show our sense of community and also inspire reading and creativity, so thank you very much for doing this.
Anything else? Anything from the audience? I know your grandmother will be watching you also, so. And Mary Lou's nobody to screw with either. Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Well, I'm sorry, wait a minute, we first go to the amended motion for the $40 fee for the city. Any comments on that? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes, now we go to the main motion. Is there any comment on the main, any further comment on the main motion? If not, all in favor of the main motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against, say nay. Motion does pass. Again, thank you. Item number nine, consideration of special event request, Richmond Lions Club White Cane Sale. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request received from the Richmond Lions Club to conduct their annual White Cane Sale on Friday, April 27th and Saturday, April 28th. Council has approved this request in previous years, and we have all of their information required under our guidelines for soliciting in the intersections on file at the clerk's office, so administration's recommendation is for approval.
Good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the request received from Richmond Lions Club to conduct their Good Fellow Paper Sale at the intersections of Main Division and County Line Road, St. Clair Highway, on Friday, April 27th and Saturday, April 28th, 2018, from dawn to dusk. Further, the Lions Club agree not to be in the Main Division intersections on Friday, April 27th, from 2:30 PM to 3:30 PM, and further, that the Lions agree to sign a liability waiver.
Support.
Motion's been made in support, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just glad to see that we're able to do this again. Nonprofit organizations solicit their goods in our roadways.
Should the motion be the White Cane and not the Good Fellow Paper, or is that?
Yes.
Yep.
Good catch, caught that before, but it didn't get changed.
We could approve that before.
We're just gonna roll them all into one.
Next Thanksgiving.
Roll them all into one and be done.
We're doing everything else for the year.
Then also, I'd just like to thank Representative Yarck for, I know that he put some motion into this as far as getting it reversed back to make sure that we could have nonprofits, again, soliciting on the streets.
Again, I would like to add that this in no way gives authority on the casco side of the road, just to make that real clear, because I know it's happening, so. Any other comments? Any comments from the audience? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 10 is consideration of EDC appointment. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider making an appointment to the EDC. Currently, there is one vacancy with an expiration date of 7/1/2018. As this is so close to expiring, if council prefers, once we make this motion, we'll just kind of keep this application on file, not make them fill out another, and we'll bring it back to you in June to reappoint.
Very good. Okay, is there, I would ask that the city council confirm my appointment for Danielle Lee. She comes highly recommended from another member of the EDC, and they're very excited that this is gonna fill out the EDC commission for the first time in many, 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 many years. It's a large board, so we appreciate her stepping forward, so. Is there a motion?
I'd like to confirm the mayor's appointment of Danielle Lee to the EDC to fill the vacant term with an expiration date of 7/1/2018. Support.
Motion's been made in support of. Any other discussion?
I'd like to say something, Mr. Mayor. Yes, and I've been on the EDC for over 14 years now, and we have never had a full board, so this will be the first time, it'll, in at least 14 years, that we have a full board, and it's, I've met Danielle, and I highly recommend her as well. She is very excited to be on the board, especially with our new collaboration of our events calendar and our events planning that we're doing, and loading that up on the webpage, she's, was inspired by. She's was inspired by the idea of that to expand what the EDC does more so than our bricks and mortar, which was what we've, which was what we needed and always focused on. And so now as we're moving forward, since that's been well established, she has a knack for that. So she will be a great addition to the board.
Anything else? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. We thank Danielle. On the amended agenda, we go back up to consideration of the introduction and first reading of ordinance number 163 Golf Cart Ordinance. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to give introduction and first reading to ordinance number 163 Golf Carts. This ordinance would allow for the utilization of golf carts on city streets if registered through the city police department. Council initially reviewed sample golf cart ordinances at their October roundtable meeting. And then based on feedback at that meeting in October and reviewing the ordinance from the village of Milford, the city administration drafted the roughly the ordinance that's in front of you tonight, which you then reviewed at your January 2018 quarterly meeting. Essentially, state law changed back in 2015, allowing municipalities, I believe under 30,000, the choice to legalize golf carts as long as it was done by the legislative body. And so that kind of opened up this area. And so I put not only the draft ordinance, but a copy of the Michigan Vehicle Code, that section related to this. Much of the ordinance, as we discussed at our roundtable, is taken directly from that Michigan Vehicle Code. There were a couple of questions that we've sent to our attorney and insurance company. I anticipate that I'll get that back prior to putting it on the agenda for the second reading and adoption. Initially, the question that we posed to our attorney was you cannot run golf carts on state highways or roads with a speed limit over a certain amount. But it does allow you to cross them using the most direct route. As Richmond has grown and as we all know, we don't have kind of a nice grid system, so the intersections don't always line up. The initial reaction from the attorney was it doesn't matter how long that distance is, as long as they're using the most direct point. Once I, you know, she came out here for another meeting with the mayor and I. And when she saw kind of the offset of some of our intersections, she wanted to do a little bit more research on that item. She didn't kind of realize the extreme that we have in some cases. So she's doing a little more research on that. Everything has been forwarded as far as the insurance limits and the need to have additionally insured. And we should be hearing back from our insurance company prior to the second reading.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to introduce and give first reading the ordinance number 163 Golf Carts, an ordinance to allow the use of golf carts in the city streets.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Discussion? John, I thank you for bringing this to the table as quickly as you have. I think this is gonna be great. Like I have a cottage up in Lexington where they allow golf carts. And what really came apparent was the fact that people were driving around on their golf carts and they waved to you and the next time they might, you know, stop and talk to you. It just created an atmosphere so much more neighborhood-like. And as we all know, that seems to be not the case anymore, even in our small town. I think this would enhance that, that and the fact that, just the fact that you're gonna be using either an electric or gas powered vehicle, that is much smaller than the vehicles that we normally have to go on. That in itself, if anybody has gone to some of the events in our park or some of the events at the school, you run out of parking room. They're parking up on the grass and everything else. The only thing I don't like about it is the state law that you can't do it after dusk. It's actually half an hour before dusk you have to be off the road. For that reason that I just stated, I don't, I don't like the state law. Maybe Mr. Yark can work on that. But I think this is gonna be great for our community. And I had also initially talked to the people in Milford before I handed this over to John to run with it. And they had indicated that there weren't any problems at that time. And I think John has talked to them since, to the police chief, and he's indicated the same thing. They haven't had any problems. If we have problems, we'll correct them. We can rewrite the ordinance or whatever we need to do. But it's like anything else, if somebody's gonna abuse something, then they will need to deal with the consequences. So I think it's a very positive thing for, for our town. That and the fact that St. Clair County, which covers half of our border, has now allowed just about anything goes for SUVs and ATVs and golf carts and everything else. And evidently, just talking to the supervisor of one of the townships in the last week, there haven't been any issues as of yet. This is strictly golf carts, so that people don't get that mixed up with anything else.
Yes.
Strictly golf carts at this point in time. But that's what got me going when the St. Clair County and the state of Michigan basically has allowed this. And each, I think county has been able to jump into it or opt out. And then the townships, I believe, same way. So I just, since they're here, it provided the stimulus to take a look at least the golf carts at this point. I've had a lot of people talk about other ATVs and stuff. But we all discussed in our workshop, we wanted to start off with golf carts and see how that all works out. And then if, if and when the time is, is right, we'll look at the, the rest of that down the line. I appreciate the support for this first reading tonight. Any other discussion on the comments?
Just one comment, and it's licensed individuals, like 16 and older with a driver's license, chauffeur's license are only allowed to drive this.
Yeah.
Also, I want to add that there is no gray area. Like you said, it's strictly golf carts. There's a lot of rules. And if this does all go through, recommend people, if you're interested, before you buy one, make sure you come in and get all the rules.
Right.
Because it's very restrictive in what you can do. So it's not an all-terrain vehicle by any means, or you can't just go as fast as you want.
Right.
There's speed limits, everything, so.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of rules. But I agree, it's, it should be great for the community. See how it all works out.
Yeah, yeah. It'd be interesting to see what our attorney and legal says on the access. Because we do have some areas in town that are, could be blocked from reaching other areas of town. Hopefully that doesn't happen, but. Talking safety. Any other comments?
Yes, I just have one comment, two more on the map. And how we designate, we have the four designations that are on the map. Just wondering if we need a fifth designation because in the, the Michigan Vehicle Code, there's a bunch of different guidelines and rules. And on number 12, it talks about the, can only be on roads that are under 35 miles per hour.
I can mark it up, yeah, once, once we get to that point of the streets that are higher than that.
Right.
Yeah, Division Road would be one of those.
32 mile in the city limits.
Yep.
And then also we talk about County Line Road, which is part of St. Clair and McComb. But that would also fall under that too, even though it's, you know, if.
Yeah, it's not our street, so it's not under your jurisdiction to approve on County Line.
Right, exactly.
As a boundary road, 33 mile road and County Line is under the jurisdiction of the Road Commissioner, Department of Roads.
But all I'm just saying is that there, it's under, it's more than 35 miles per hour limit on there, so it would be excluded anyway.
Correct.
And then also, you know, yeah, 32 mile road going going west to Low Planet. So I don't know.
Yeah, we're, at this table, we're only approving the city streets that are under our jurisdiction. Those are not the County Line and 33.
It's funny that you bring that up. Mike, maybe that's another thing also that when we do hand out the license for the
They get a copy.
We give them a map to make it real clear what is and what isn't.
Sure, sure. Yeah, we've been talking about that because obviously the, the map that you have even in your packet tonight is one that I did. So I think both Jim and Troy are much more capable of producing a map that's a little more professional than, than the one I did. I just did it for our purposes and discussion. But yeah, certainly I think we can come up with a more professional looking map than we have, yeah.
Is there any discussion with the schools about using their basically private property roads?
I haven't at this point. I assume that once we get through the second reading, I can forward that on to the superintendent.
Let our residents know too that they can't.
They can make a determination on whether they want them or don't want them on their school campus.
So, so speaking of that too, then kind of a, we recently increased the speed limit on 32 mile road near, in front of the school. Except during school hours, right? So what happens if somebody wanted to drive along 32 mile road in, in front of the school campus during, when it's 25?
It's such a short distance because actually like right in front of the high school. If you go out and look at where the part of what we did when we made that change is we shortened the distance where the speed limit actually changes. It's much more right at the crossing.
Yeah, it's real close to Grove.
Yeah, so it's pretty much just at Grove.
Somebody could drive a golf cart then at that time.
Just, yeah, just by the crossing. But, you know, again, that's gonna be part of the answer. Because, because they wouldn't be able to then go in front of the high school, because that speed limit never changes.
That stays 35.
Yeah. So they could, for instance, get across Grove to the library parking lot, but they couldn't necessarily go down to Main Street. Depending on the answer from the attorney.
Any other discussion? Any audience comments? Jeff?
Jeff Yark, State Representative, 35545, Pound Road. Since you brought it up, just wanted to let you know that House Bill 4945 was voted out of the House. That speaks to the concerns regarding being on a state highway. Did come up. Sorry to talk about a lot of meaning, but I wanted to share this information so you knew. It's in the Senate right now in the transportation. I don't remember if it went extended or talked about dusted on. I meant, I don't, I was just trying to pull it up and refresh, but it does speak to state highways to give you. It's sitting in the Transportation Committee in the Senate. Introduce up Senator Pavla, which is our senator here, is on transportation. So if anyone had concerns that they wanted to talk to him about or moving it, it may be worthwhile to reach out to Senator Pavla. You know, if you have some things that you may want to see changed, just give me the heads up about that bill, since it seems to be on point.
What was the House bill number, Jeff?
4945. Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number 12, consideration of scheduling budget workshops. Mr. City Manager?
Council is being requested to consider scheduling approximately three to four budget workshop meeting dates during the months of April and May to review and make necessary changes to the city manager's proposed budget. Last year, councilors indicated that the system worked well, where we have the budget workshops on the same nights as the regular meetings of council. Based on this information, the budget workshops would be proposed to be on April 16th, May 7th, and May 21st. The motion before you tonight says 5:30, but I did get some feedback that one member of council may not be able to make it till 6:00.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to schedule the following budget workshop meeting dates to review, modify the city manager's proposed fiscal year 2018-19 city budget as necessary. Dates April 16th, May 7th, May 21st, beginning at 6:00 PM.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Any discussion? Worked well last year, as John said, and hopefully it'll work well again this year. Any other comments? Any audience comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Our final item, 13, consideration of e-payment services agreement, point and pay. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to approve the e-payment service agreement with point and pay for e-payment services and approval of the fees to the residents associated with the use of credit card and e-check payments. Administration is currently in the process of implementing the new BSNA financial software as approved in the fiscal year 1718 budget. And the software has a tentative go-live date of the week of April 9th. I think our date is April 12th is the actual go-live date. And so we would like to get this in order so that we have the credit card machine when we go live. There's about a four to six week lead time on getting everything set up. The fees are only applicable to residents who wish to use credit cards or those using e-check payment without signing up for the true online payments that come. The program will directly take it out of your account and pay your bill for you. So you can, you know, set this up to have online payments where you're not being charged a fee. But those that wish to use a credit card, rather than have the rest of the residents and taxpayers have to pay for that fee, we have the person who's using the credit card pay that fee. Most of the communities around us, or many of them, go with this program, which is the point and pay. It's the one that BSNA recommends, as many of you remember as we went through the hiring of the new treasurer and discussions with her. Since then, BSNA eliminates a lot of the redundant work that we're doing with both, by utilizing both Fund Balance and BSNA. They recommend this particular provider of the credit card because it fully integrates with BSNA. So it takes kind of double work out of the equation.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to direct administration to sign the agreement and fees with point and pay to authorize the city treasurer to sign the agreement.
Support.
What's been made and supported? Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to say how excited I am about this happening in town. And I believe that the fees that we have here are appropriate because there is also a free option. So it's provides, if you don't want to be charged, then you do the automatic withdrawal. If you don't want that, then you do pay the fees that come with it. So it's very appropriate.
Anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just kind of following along with Counselor Green. The automatic withdrawal, do we have a sense for how many, in other communities, how many people sign up for that? Just curious to see if that's a popular option.
A lot of other communities do, do utilize that, usually by signing an agreement. So the resident would come in and say, I want to have my water bills deducted every 12 weeks or whenever, every quarterly.
Do we have any idea percentage of residents that, on average?
I do not have, I do not have that. But I can find that information out for you. Because a lot of information is shared out, there's a treasurer listserv that will give that information.
Anything else of Angel? Well, we got her up there. You gotta be something. Come on, we don't get her up there. Thank you. Any audience comments on this? Back to the table. Well, it's certainly great that this has come around, as been mentioned already. It's been a few years since we've talked about it and tried to get it to happen. And now with the BSNA, it makes it possible, so make it much easier for a lot of people to conduct their city business. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Got through it. City Manager's comment, sir?
I just wanted to let you know that Equiture, which is the company that handles the voice recording of our radio and phone traffic. As I had previously mentioned to council, they're coming out with a product for body cameras. And they're doing a two-year pilot program here in Richmond. They started some of their work today.
Oh, great. Very good. Moving on, council comments.
I'll go first, huh?
Yeah.
I just want to congratulate Rick and Wrestling Team for making it to the States. And I know Rob's always on the team and so looking forward to hopefully seeing them win their ninth state championship possibility, so. Wish them the best.
Very good. Rob?
Good.
John?
I'm good.
How about you?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Jamie?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Michael?
No, nothing, just other than thanking Representative Yark for being here today. You sure that's what's going on?
Always fun to see him.
Always fun to see, yeah.
Yeah, and also the cheerleading team? What's going on in the States?
Regionals.
Regionals.
Yeah, we're regionals.
All right, that's this weekend?
Yeah, they have to place in the top four. There'll be 16 teams there.
Okay. Okay.
The top four go on to states.
Good, great.
So, they have a good shot and.
Yeah.
Hopefully that'll move on. And then basketball, I think they're still in their league play.
Yeah, we're still in league play.
Districts coming up on that. So, a lot of exciting things as usual, so.
Wrestling put twelve individuals in the state, filed for individuals, so.
And what could they have done, fourteen? Yeah, so I mean, unbelievable, again. Yeah. So, great, very good, okay. I think I hid the calendar. I must have picked it up when I picked all this up, Mike. Yeah, I did, there it is. For the calendar here. I, oh, I just wanted to mention also, the Richmond Police Officers Association brought back their, their dance, their Valentine's dance this past Saturday. It was well-attended. It was a lot of fun again, it was like old times back in Richmond by having that back. So, I've been assured that it's gonna continue again for next year and it'll be bigger and better and we thank everybody from the RPOA for putting that all back together again, it's no small task. But it brings a tradition back, I love those type of things. We go to the calendar, today being the nineteenth of February. We have, the library board will meet a week from tonight, the twenty-sixth, at seven o'clock at the library. The Tifa will be meeting on the twenty-eighth at seven o'clock here at City Hall. That takes us into March. The next regular scheduled meeting of the Richmond City Council is on the fifth at seven o'clock here at City Hall. And the REGS Historic Tea, it's an annual event that they have, that will be happening on March tenth. I also have another thing on the table here tonight. The, who is, the Richmond Community Theater will be having auditions for a play that they will be doing. Those auditions are on March fifth and sixth. The doors will open at six-thirty for the auditions, begin at seven. The Richmond Community Theater's phone number is seven-two-seven-nine-five-one-eight. And also another community theater, let's see, what is this? Where's the date, guys? There it is, on March second, third, and fourth.
The production of.
Yeah, production of a comedy at Richmond Community Theater. Again, you can call seven-two-seven-nine-five-one-eight for those tickets. The Richmond Area Chamber of Commerce will be holding alpaca races. That is not the actual animal, it is an animated alpaca. We've heard that around town, that they're racing actual alpacas. That will be held at Maniachi's Banquet Hall, that is going to be this weekend. Where's the date on here? February twenty-fourth. You can get tickets at seven-two-seven-three-two-six-six. And that's it for those. And that takes, moves us on to any other business of the city council this evening. I think we've conducted enough tonight. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Most been made and supported, there's no discussion on adjournment. Motion all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes.